Okay, good evening everyone. Welcome to this Community in Leisure meeting of Gravesham Borough Council. Just before we start. I intend to go through some housekeeping matters. What happened there? I don't know. This meeting is being livestreamed by YouTube and recorded. The recording will be updated to YouTube within two working days, where it can be accessed by everyone. Members, please use the microphone in front of you when talking and ensure you turn your microphone off once you have finished speaking. Another member or officer will not be able to speak if your microphone is still on. Please note that the council's visual equipment may, on some occasions, focus on or near to the public gallery area. Therefore, those in attendance at this meeting may be filmed or recorded. Attendance at this meeting signifies your agreement to this. However, if, as a member of the public, we do not have anyone there, you do not wish to be filmed or recorded, please inform a council staff member in attendance and we will try to assist where reasonably possible. On hearing the fire alarm, we ask all attendees to immediately evacuate the building. Please evacuate via the nearest fire exits in the corner there and make your way to the community square outside of the main reception doors. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the apologies. Any apologies, Karen, please?
We perceive no apologies for absence.
Thank you. Now we go to item number three, minutes of the previous meeting. Is everyone in agreement? Great, thank you. I'll go ahead and sign those. Thank you. Thank you. Item number four, declarations of interest. Any declarations? No? Thank you. Item number five, to consider whether any items in part A of the agenda should be considered in private or those, if any, in part B in public. I haven't been informed of any, so that's good. And then that now takes us to item number six, Gravesham Health Alliance and Sport England Place-Based Partnership. And I think Liz will take that on. Right, thank you, Liz.
Thank you. So I'm Liz Reed, I'm the Health and Wellbeing Manager for Gravesham Borough Council. The purpose of the report is just to give an update on the Gravesham Health Alliance and the work around the Sport England Place-Based Partnership. So just to give some context from the Gravesham Health Alliance. The Kent and Medway Integrated Care Partnership was formed in 2022. And the care system identifies the importance of local knowledge and local systems, improving health and wellbeing and the role of the districts within that. And Health Alliance is a part of that in terms of engaging a range of voluntary and community sector leaders and partner organisations and to agree key priorities and actions for the local area. In July 2024, the Kent and Medway Integrated Health Strategy was adopted and the 2024-26 brings together the priorities for how the strategy will be delivered. So in November 24, Gravesham mapped the initiatives that were already being delivered for the Shared Delivery Plan and those included enabling young people to thrive and grow, supporting people to manage long-term conditions, embedding a health and all policies approach and making every contact count. As these initiatives are already being delivered and directly fed into the shared plan, it was agreed that Gravesham could continue to focus on these areas and feed results and finding back into the shared delivery plan. Therefore, the review of those priorities will take place in 2026, when the new delivery plan is started. As part of this work, each area is required to have a health alliance. And as the work around the Sport England Place-Based Partnership is already bringing together a range of partners across Gravesham to inform this work, it's been agreed in terms of the KCC Director of Public Health that it makes sense to align the Health Alliance with the work around the Sport England Place-Based Partnership rather than reduce duplication and to achieve better alignment between the work. So to give some context to the Sport England Place-Based Partnership, in November 2023, Sport England announced a £250 million package of investment into place partnerships to help people become more physically active and to break down barriers to participation. Gravesham is one of the first areas included and focusing on two middle to upper areas, which in Gravesham are Northfleet North and Westcourt, which are informed by a range of data that Sport England has used to inform those. Active Kent and Medway are the lead organisation and in conjunction with partners, including Gravesham Borough Council, developed the first stage of that award. And that includes staff resource around project coordination, monitoring and evaluation, reviewing existing data, community connections, stakeholder engagement and the others listed there. So as an update, the Programme Manager and the Monitoring and Evaluation Officer for Gravesham and Planet have now been recruited and are in post and are employed by Active Kent and Medway. And they're currently undertaking a high-level needs assessment, focusing on understanding the unique needs and opportunities in both of those areas. And so there is a list there of what they will be doing in terms of looking at local need, partnerships and gaps, past investment and learning, monitoring and valuation and looking ahead. So in terms of how those two pieces of work align, the Health Alliance and the Sport England Place-Based Partnership, is part of the Sport England Development Award, there are there is some funding allocated to test and learn, but also a two-day facilitated leader development programme aimed at bringing those stakeholders within those areas together to shape the kind of governance model of how that work will take place and the principles, values and commitments and expectations of that work. So therefore, it's proposed that the governance structure for the Health Alliance and Place-Based work develops alongside that leadership development programme. And that's expected to take place in October, November this year, but actually from meeting with some of the partners last week, I think it might be early December, rather than the dates here suggested. It's also anticipated that across the life of the partnership, the governance will evolve and to ensure strategic decisions and initiatives are rooted in the communities that this work is focused on. So in terms of the legal implications as set out in this paper and actually on item 10 on your agenda today, which is the Corporate Register of Partnerships, this partnership is referenced in that Corporate Register of Partnerships in item 2.3 on that report, but referencing that further information on the governance that will be provided as it develops. And that's the update. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks a lot, Liz. That's a very good update and a lot of really good initiatives. With the, I just have one quick question. On 3.4, it says the governments will be developed over the coming months. Do we roughly know how long that might take, do you think? Thank you.
So as referenced in item 3.1 on there, the leadership development training, which will bring together partners involved in the partnership work, is anticipated that that will form the basis of that governance of that work. Or at least the foundation of it to start with. So I would say the aim is that by the end of the financial year, that governance structure will be in place at the latest.
Brilliant, thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments? No? Okay, great. Thank you very much, Liz. Thank you. It's a lot of work. Thank you. That takes us to item seven, the Sport Leisure and Active Recreation Strategy update, which I think Danielle will be taking us through. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, councillor. Bear with me a moment. I'm just bringing up a photo slide. Okay, so this is the annual update on the council's Sport Leisure and Active Recreation Strategy, which was finalised in October of 2022, actually ties in quite nicely with what Liz was talking about. Because the large number of years, Gravesham, sorry, I should I say, has had the unenviable reputation of being the least active borough in Kent, according to the Active Live Survey, which is the Sport England recognised survey that's carried out on an annual basis. So basically, the strategy's main aim is to get more people, more active, more often. So we have a kind of not one-step approach on how we do this. So the report that I've written covers the delivery of a range of strategic initiatives, operational delivery, which includes management of GBC-owned football facilities and our list of sports development interventions. So I'm not really going to go through the whole list of what we've done, but what I've done is I've just put together a little little photo show of some of the promotion around some of these events and some pictures of the actual delivery of this. So I do mention the game on strategy, sorry, game on initiative in the report as well. So that was delivered in partnership with the Gravesend Women's Hockey Club. So as you can see there, it wasn't just a focus on hockey. They had Dragon Ball. Don't ask me what it is, because I do not know. And they also had Ultimate Frisbee Street Cricket and Zone Cricket on that one. Gravesend Cricket Club also delivered some women's cricket sessions for us. As mentioned in the GCLL update, I can't remember what last, I think it was the last committee meeting, we are running the Good Boost Programme at the leisure centres, so that is using artificial intelligence to deliver exercise interventions for those with their long-term health conditions and muscular skeletal issues. Here we have a photo of all the participants in the girls' football tournament, which took place on International Women's Day. So because of the large number of participants, we had to do this in two sessions. There was a morning and afternoon session that involved over 250 girls from, I think it was over nine local schools. This photo here is of the Head in the Game initiative, which took place at Kedball Leisure. So this was involving mental health support in with physical activity. Okay, and there's the Park Fitness Programme, which is still running currently and ends at the end of this month. So that is showcasing our local parks and open spaces and delivering low-cost and free sport sessions. So that is taking place across the borough and I suppose on the border of Ebsfleet as well at Pengreen Park. So the next picture in the slide is of the bootcamp sessions down the prom. I mean, that looks a beautiful day. Looks too far physical for me, but yeah. And also I wanted to touch briefly on our everyday active website page. So the link is at the top there. So Sam, our Sport Recreation Officer in my team, leads on the populating of this page. So this is run by Active Kent and Medway and each borough has their own page and the aim of it is to promote free and low-cost activities that are going on locally. Bearing in mind she's an individual person, we are currently second in the most visited page in Kent for this. Only second to Medway, but they have a team of about five people updating their website, so she should take a lot of pride in how well she's doing with that website. I haven't listed all the initiatives on there, but I have just wanted to go through some others that aren't in the report. So currently, we are waiting on the planning application for the to see if we can go ahead with the 3D football pitch development at Northfleet School for Girls. So along with the school, local football clubs and GBC, we've formed part of the steering group that successfully applied for funding from the Kent FA and the Football Foundation to install a full-size 3D pitch at Northfleet School for Girls. Additionally, the council has a small budget that allocates every year to financial assistance. So this is used to support talented athletes and initiatives that sports clubs would like to put on, which perhaps they might not have the funding for themselves. So for example, in the last financial year, we issued a total of six financial support grants to local talented athletes to help continue their sporting progression. And the sports represented within these grants included swimming, volleyball, tenpin bowling. And we were also able to support eight local clubs to deliver community engagement projects. Some of these clubs were Isar Drive Boatank Club, Gravesham Dynamite Wheelchair Rugby Club and Woodlands Park Bowls Club. Another project that Sam's been working on is we've been engaging with CASBAR on a number of projects. So these include a weekly open tennis session. It's a more general activator session, a bit like the Free Park Tennis. And we just recently completed a Learn to Cycle scheme with CASBAR, so that helped them learn to ride bikes, improve their road confidence and promoted road safety with them. We also supported Woodlands Park Bowls Club with their open days in May. Over 70 people attended that event and the club picked up 12 new members as a result of that. So yeah, that's just some of the other interventions that we've been working on. Yeah, I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Danielle. You and the team have been extremely busy this summer. Thank you very much. That's a very, very good report. And it's nice to see there's a lot of effort going into the areas of like Northfleet North and Westcourt. I know further in the report, it talks about the physical fitness in certain areas. So it's good that there's a huge fitness initiative within the borough and it's a really good outlet for our residents. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. I've just realised my last slide is a short video. So rather than me talk about the impact of a project, this is the She's a Leader Programme and two of the girls talking about the impact that the project has had on them. Fingers crossed it works.
Okay, right, thank you.
Hi, my name's Emma and I'm here doing my leadership course. I did level one last year and I'm here doing level two.
Hi, I'm Eliana and I've done my level one course last year and I'm doing my level two course.
This leadership course has helped me develop skills like problem solving and self management and being more organised, so I get less stressed out and definitely my self confidence.
This course has helped me gain a lot more confidence in myself because when I joined this course, I thought I wouldn't be able to do or perform anything. But since then, I've gained a lot more self belief in myself and my communication and problem solving has improved lots. I've become a lot more open minded with things and I think this course has really helped me grow.
Today we're helping a local event and it's helping kids have more fun and be more safe. We've set up football and bubble football for them to do.
We're trying to encourage them to be more active and have fun in their community.
And I've really finished this time, thank you.
No problem. That bubble football, that looks like a lot of fun. Thanks. Helen.
Thank you, Chair. Rather you playing bubble football than me. Danielle, I just wanted to ask you a question. At the last community in leisure, it was reported that there was vandalism on the new tennis courts that had been done. Has there been any further instances of vandalism and how much has it cost to repair the damage? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm pleased to say that touch wood, we haven't had any incidents of vandalism for about a month and a half now. Luckily, I say luckily, the vandalism has been mainly focused on the gates to the courts. So we are still under a maintenance contract with the gate provider. So we do get an element of free call out charges for them to fix the damage. So I would say so far, we've not actually spent a great deal out to fix any damage.
Thank you, Helen. Ben.
Thanks, Danielle. I always look forward to your presentation because it looks always into sport and that's probably my biggest hobby of mine. If I'm not here, I'm at a sporting event somewhere in the world. But what I would say is, one of the points, 3.5, looking at the tennis court refurbishments, that's been a real highlight for Woodlands, I must admit. I've had a lot of really positive feedback. You've got the three Woodlands councillors sitting here. I've had more emails of positivity about the changes to Woodlands and the park and what it looks like, but actually the accessibility piece, which is good and I think the coaching sessions are great. One thing that I think is really positive and I highlighted a couple of meetings ago now, was that the visibility of the sessions of what you're doing, how you're advertising it. And I think what I have seen, especially on the social media channels now, is that there's so much more visibility of the events that are going on. Hence then you're seeing a lot more footfall of people turning up. And I think the pictures of the girls' football down International Women's Days is brilliant. So from me, thank you so much for what you're doing and I look forward to hearing you in a couple of months' time.
Thank you. I do have a bit of an update on the Woodlands Park site as well. So we will have free park tennis sessions starting on Sunday mornings, so from the 21st of September. So again, these are the volunteers that give up their free time every weekend. So the coach that's delivering that is a member of Meppen Tennis Club and has a role in Kent tennis. So always eternally grateful to our activators for the free time that they give up to deliver these sessions.
Well, that's brilliant. I met when we opened up the Wilmwall Park Tennis and met a couple of the coaches and they are so good with the children and adults alike, but they make it fun for people that are learning tennis and realising that tennis is for everybody, not just a certain group of people. So no, it's a great initiative. Thank you. Any other questions or comments, Ben? Do you want to come back on?
Just the last one from me. You mentioned about the financial support grant. I actually was received the financial support grant from the council probably about 10, 12 years ago. Look where I ended up. But it was a great support and a great thing. How, probably going back onto my last question, how are we advertising that, making sure that we're doing for me? It sounds like already it's going through some organisations, but what's the plan? Thank you.
Actually, I'll take that point and voy aboard because we probably don't advertise it as well as we should. A lot of, a lot of it's word of mouth. So there's the, obviously we have a local fan scheme, so that's free access for national sports people. So that actually gives talented athletes free training access at Cascades and Signet Leisure Centre. Again, we should probably do more to promote that scheme because we do have some, I'll include yourself in that at one point, some very talented athletes in the borough. So yeah, we should, we should be doing more to promote that and then support them.
That's actually good. And maybe we could do more on the social media pages for Gravesham Borough Council. I think, and I think for any of these sports initiatives and leisure initiatives, I think we should possibly promote them more. We can do it through our Gravesham website and also through social media channels.
Yeah, it is currently on the website, Adrian reminded me, but I think, yeah, there's definitely more we can do to roll it out further.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or observations, questions? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, that, sorry. That takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is the community, the corporate performance quarter one. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to take a look. I think so. One sec. Moment please, apologies. I apologise, I was actually going for my electronic version here. Yes, I apologise. The next item is the New Tavern Fort Project and it's a presentation, I believe, that Virginie will provide for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. So I'm going to give you a brief update about the National Heritage Lottery Fund that we're putting together regarding the fort. I've been to this committee before when we started the project. So we've, we've gone a bit further with this. So as you know, for all the grants that are over £250,000, we have to go through a two-stage application process. So it's not a quick win, it's something that will, will take time. So what we did, we submitted an expression of interest to NHLF, which passed. And in the meantime, whilst we've been doing a bit more work on it, we've been advised to submit an updated one, which will be probably submitted in the next few weeks to reflect those changes and the, you know, the evolution of the project. So the first stage is to apply for the development grant. So that will enable us to develop the project to Reba Stage Three within two years. And then it will take us to a further stage, a second stage. And this will be to apply for the delivery grant to deliver the project. And having identified all the risks and making sure, you know, that we can, we can deal with, with any, any issues that have been raised during the development phase. So at the moment, we are at the first stage application and we're looking at submitting in May 2026. So we, something I haven't mentioned, but we've got now a bid writer in place that is helping us putting together that bid is very, you know, is very knowledgeable, he's got a lot of projects on those belts, he knows a lot about National Heritage Lottery Funds. So, so that's, that's a big help for us. So as I say, the timescale, I mentioned May 2026 being the submission of round one of the bid. Then we're expecting the decision probably around September time, which means that, you know, from that decision will, by January 2027, we'll be able to start the development phase. It will take two years. So by December 2028, roughly, we're hoping to that, to complete that development phase and submit the round two bid, which will start March 2029 with the decision. And by summer 2029, that's where we will start that second phase. And again, that will be a three to four years' delivery. So. So what's going to happen during that delivery phase project? So we're looking at bringing two of the stages together, which is one and two of the consultation report that I had shared quite previously. So that again, it's, it's about £3 million, you know, project that we need to focus on. So there'll be capital, so capital focus on the chantry to start with, the urgent fort repairs, because quite a lot, you know, it needs to be dealt with, with the fort, the access improvements and something that came out of the consultations is the play areas, you know, try to attract more of the families and the children and the heritage landscape work. So that, that will be that. Activities, so because NHLF is very strong on activities and how we, we involve the community. So we'll be focusing on volunteering and education activities linked with local schools. We will have an interpretation development, development activities and apprentices. And obviously as part of that will be the event programme and obviously the organisation. So as you know, at the moment, the site is, is mainly run by Thames Defence Heritage on our behalf. But what we're looking at is really to create a steering group with different people on it and with different skills, different backgrounds. And so the idea will be to embed the CIO as the custodian of the sites with income generation. So a cafe, a concessionist will be looking at lettings, events and, and obviously an ongoing organisation development with the idea of having more of a evolution of a trustee board in the, in the long term. So I think I've reversed the two I've just noticed, but the development phase delivery, so as I said, was 24 months. So that capital will work with conservation, accredited design team to develop Reba Three. Again, more activities to continue with what our vision for, for the all site will be and more interpretation and transition to the steering group that will be set up in the first phase into a shadow board for a new CIO, which means that it will ensure that the site becomes sustainable and doesn't put too much, you know, stress on the finance, financial stress, sorry. So yes, so there's going to be a lot of work happening in the, in the, in the next, in the next month and ready for, for May. But, you know, we're hopeful that it will, it will work. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Virginie. That was a very comprehensive presentation, a lot of information, a lot of work. And it's, I think it's important to preserve our heritage sites as much as possible. And if we can get funding to do that, that's, that's really good that they've come through with the funding. I have one quick question on the anagram Reba. For all of us that are unsure, what does Reba stand for, please? Thank you.
So it's Royal Institute of British Architects.
Thank you. Okay, any questions, comments from anyone? No? We're all good with that? Okay, all right, brilliant. Thank you so much. Thank you. The interest see it develop over the, the coming months.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. An apology is, I missed that. Thanks. Okay, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to look at the corporate performance report. Not, obviously not going to go through it line by line, but any comments from anyone regarding, we're all good with the numbers and explanation? Yeah? Okay. The one, I had a couple of questions, I'm not sure who can answer this, but the, under the, the policy commitment, which is to do with revitalising the town, the two grant streams that are open for application, the St Andrews Quayside Activation and the Town Centre Twilight Economy Scheme, offering totals of £66,000 funding. Has there been any interest or uptake on those at all? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So yes, it's gone, it's gone out and we've had a few, a few interests. To be fair, maybe not as many as we, we hoped to have. I know there's been a lot of work promoting it and going to, to the businesses. So I think we've, we've had about five applications so far, but we are looking, we are looking at obviously trying to push it more because we've got a bit more time.
Thank you. Is there, I'm sorry, Adrian, did you want to come on? Thank you.
Just to add to that, it mentions in the report around the shop front grants. And since the report's been done, we've actually gone back out again and advertised the 65,000 total pot that we've got. And we're just going through and finalising those particular applications that have come in, but it looks like we will spend 65,000. So that's, that's good.
Well, that is good, thank you, because we had a really good response from the first tranche that went out, didn't we? That, the first set of shop front grants. That's been very positive, I think. Thank you. Any other comments on that? No? All right, thank you. That then takes us to item 10, the Corporate Register of Partnerships. Who will be taking us up on that one, please? Thank you.
So as you know, the council's got a register of corporate partnership and it's just been updated. So for these four communities, we've got two, two main ones to highlight, which was the North West Kent Countryside Partnership and the Thames Defence Heritage. So I don't know if you, any of you had the time to look through? If you've got any questions, I'm happy to take it.
Thank you, Virginie. Any questions, anyone? Any comments? No? I have one quick question. Under the North West Kent Countryside Partnership, it says the governance arrangements, the partnership has a memorandum of agreement running from September 2021 to August 2024. Has that been updated at all? Thank you.
Yes, I've, I've noticed that as well and I've cleared it and it looks like it's been left in, but from what I understand, the partnership is still existing, but it's more in the background at the moment and has really, we have, hasn't been as active. So I think Danielle might know more about it, but as far as I understand, we'd still do some job catching on it, but the activities are not as, as, you know, busy as they were.
Thank you. Did anybody want to come back on that? Adrian? Yeah? Thank you.
I think just to highlight, in the last few years, we've accessed the, the particular partnership of works that we've done. I know that Danielle's team has accessed that for summer fun programmes, where we actually. I know that Danielle's team has accessed that for summer fund programmes where we actually pay for those services. But our role really is just, I suppose, using the services when we need them for things. So I know that James in the Horseshoe Sculpture team has used them for some biodiversity work in the past, but I think for this year, we haven't had that much involvement with them. So it's just something that rolls.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to add as well that we, the only current project we have with them at the moment is that we have a partnership agreement with them to maintain our G O cash sites across the borough. So we pay, I think, three thousand pound for five years for that. And I think we've got another two years to, to run on that one.
Thank you, Danielle. Thanks. Any other questions, comments? No? Okay, that now takes us to item eleven. Any other business by which, by reason of special circumstances, the chairs of the opinion should be considered as matter of urgency? I haven't been notified of any. Item number twelve, exclusion to move if required, that pursuant to section one hundred A, brackets four of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy two, that the public be excluded from any items included in Part B of the agenda because it is likely in view of the nature of the business to be transacted. If members of the public are present during those items, there will be disclosure to them of exempt information as defined in part one of Schedule twelve A of the Act. There are no items in Part B. So unless we have any other comments, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Thank you to the officers for their presentations and for the input. And at eight minutes past eight, the meeting is closed. Thank you all and enjoy the rest of your evenings. Thank you.